Chairman Hayden and Committee, great to see you again this evening. Thank you for hearing House Bill 329. I'm going to go into a few details, I know we've been here for a long time this evening, but this is a very, very important piece of legislation. Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetists, as are known as CRNAs, have been administering anesthesia for nearly 150 years. CRNAs spend an average of eleven, eleven and a half years between education and clinical ICU rotations before graduating with their doctorate in nursing or nursing and anesthesia practice. All CRNAs pass the national exam, making their profession 100% certified. I'm going to kind of jump ahead of my notes, I know it's been a long night. So, in 2001, the Bush administration gave the power to the states, to the states, to remove supervision. And you can see in front of you, I passed out a map, I love visuals, and you've got to love the pictures. So, you're going to look at these, and you're going to see the front page, 48 states, 48 states with no, with no CRNA supervision, seven states. We are letting Kansas and Arkansas and Oklahoma, Illinois even, and Iowa, Kentucky, Tennessee, get ahead of us. And we know we love Oklahoma, so, and they're, and they're getting ahead of us. And, and we can't let that happen. But I just wanted to provide that with you, so you could see that for your information. On another page that I sent you as well, has CRNA and anesthesiologists' representation across the state. And you can, you can see, CRNAs are represented quite frequently in rural areas. And I think that is vital and important. I represent Texas County, Phelps County, and Marys County. In Texas County, the Texas County Memorial Hospital has zero, has none, has none anesthesiologists. We have, we didn't have any. We have two CRNAs. Now, we have three anesthesiologists up at Phelps Health. I mean, we have one at Ozarks Healthcare and down in West Plains in Howell County. But that just goes to show you, our CRNAs, they're going out in the rural communities. They're going out there to, to provide healthcare in our rural areas. And again, I just think with the first map I provided, and then the second, obviously, you can see how valuable our CRNAs are to Missouri and to the United States. So you can see that, going back to some of my notes here, again, I'm not going to go into much of a, you know, greater detail, there's a lot of folks behind me, and I know you all want to get out of here. But this bill is going to remove the supervision, and the CRNAs, they, they know what they're doing. They have the education, the intelligence to do this. There's no, in these 48 states, I, I looked for information that shows that maybe, has there been any kind of issues since those 40, I'm sorry, 43 states have changed the supervision laws? I couldn't find any issues there. Now, of course, you might hear that there might be some data behind that. Make sure you fact check that, make sure they have information on that. I was provided some information, I had some anesthesiologists, and they're very intelligent as well. They came to my office, and I appreciate them coming. Every one of them that came to my office was from, from the city. I did not have one, one anesthesiologist come to my office that was from a rural area. And nothing against that, I mean, that's, you know, they, they prefer to practice there, that's fine. And I appreciate that. We need them around as well, and we need our doctors, we need great doctors. But our CRNAs are, are here asking for a little bit, and with that, I'll present a little bit here, I have some, some, some maps of what's going on across the United States and here in Missouri. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions? You've done such a job of either baffling us or answering all our questions, or we got locked, y'all, one or the other. No questions? If not, we'll start out with those in support. Just before we start, how, I almost say do this, how many are we going to have in support? Raise your hand pretty high. Higher. High, no. You get an account?
I got around 10.
All right. How many in opposition? Four. Okay. Five. All right. Proceed, please.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Hayden, committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Denise Stida, I'm a Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist in Missouri, and I'm here today to represent the Missouri Association of Nurse Anesthetists. The heart of this bill is to update laws to benefit both metropolitan and rural constituents. So we are in support of this non-appropriated bill because it provides direct benefits to all Missourians. There are currently over 1,700 CRNAs in the state of Missouri, and we practice in all hospitals with surgical services. We are the only anesthesia provider in 41% of hospitals, and the only anesthesia provider in 78% of rural hospitals. In 43 states and in all branches of the US military, CRNAs are practicing without supervision. Yet Missouri statutes can currently say that CRNAs are required to be supervised by a physician, a dentist, or a podiatrist. These operating providers want to focus on the surgery and not be burdened with the presumed liability of managing over a specialty that they themselves admit they were not trained in. This implied liability discourages partnership with the CRNAs and reduces recruitment to these rural hospitals. CRNAs and physician anesthesiologists are two different types of anesthesia providers with different backgrounds. CRNAs, we are not trying to diminish the value that anesthesiologists bring to Missouri. We both are valued members, and we both are very much needed in the state. House Bill 329 seeks to remove the word "supervision" and allow CRNAs to practice at the request of a physician, dentist, or podiatrist. As such, this legislation does not remove physician involvement from the operating room. Furthermore, the bill fixes a misinterpretation that Missouri CRNAs are prohibited from giving controlled substances. This would include pain and anxiety medicine to patients without having first have an order or a protocol. Interpretations of the statute are inconsistent, and CRNAs are left in jeopardy for the potential violation of a regulatory interpretation. House Bill 329 is a budget-neutral solution to help alleviate these concerns without compromising patient safety and updates current laws to more accurately describe how CRNAs practice today. Despite what others may say, anesthesia is exactly the same no matter who is administering it. We all use the same machines, the same medications, and there's multiple publications to confirm that there is no difference in safety if there is a CRNA at the head of the bed or a physician anesthesiologist. We are two separate anesthesia providers that have overlapping scopes. This creates competition, and we encourage competition. It's healthy for healthcare reform and to keep costs low. Either way, we share the same standards of care, we use the same guidelines, the same protocols, all for the best interest of the patient. Both physician anesthesiologists and CRNAs have a longstanding history of providing patient-centered care, though let us not forget that the CRNAs are the ones providing the anesthesia. We ask that you support House Bill 329. It clarifies the statutes for practices already in place, removes the regulatory burdens for CRNAs and the healthcare facilities that are currently suffocating in rural Missouri. It allows CRNAs to practice without the risk of violating contradictory regulations. It's a step in the right direction to ensure that Missourians have adequate access to care. For these reasons, we respectfully ask for your support for House Bill 329.
Questions? I guess I have one. Under the bill, it would allow for pain management clinics operated by CRNAs, is that correct?
That's a good clarification. So, we made sure in the bill to say that anesthesia services can only be provided after the request of a physician, dentist, or podiatrist.
So you could not, you could not operate an independent pain management system under this bill, under your interpretation?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Representative Keighley?
Thank you. To inquire?
Go ahead.
The, so, I think the, to me, the major, the major, or the significant change to the statute in this is, is removing the supervision of an anesthesiologist or a physician, a dentist, or a podiatrist. And that's, that, that's what I guess is the, the freeing part that allows CRNAs. I don't know if that's what you mean when you say this is a clarification of practices that are, what's already in practice. But, I mean, to me, I read that, and I read it as, as pretty broad, because it doesn't require an anesthesiologist. I mean, it requires a physician, a dentist, or a podiatrist. And I'm, so I'm, I'm wondering, I'm assuming that CRNAs are practicing in a surgical setting predominantly? And I'm wondering what kind of procedure treatment is going to be administered where there would not be a physician, dentist, podiatrist, or anesthesiologist already on call? What, what, what is the situation that this statute allows a CRNA to operate without a physician in the room?
Absolutely. So, the state map that was passed out with the green counties, those are currently counties that only have CRNAs. Those counties do not have physician anesthesiologists. So in those counties, the supervising provider is the surgeon, the dentist, or podiatrist. We call these the operating practitioner. These operating practitioners do not wish to supervise the anesthesia. They were, were not trained in the anesthesia. We have some testifying here today to provide witness to that. And supporting states, as Representative Cook presented, that all of the surrounding states around Missouri do not have a supervision requirement for CRNAs. So we were trained as independent practitioners, and the misinterpretation is both for the, what the word "supervision" means, which implies that the surgeon, dentist, or podiatrist is overseeing what the CRNA is doing, and that, that is not accurate. In addition, that in our current state statutes, there was a little miscommunication with the Bureau who regulates narcotics to say that CRNAs could not administer controlled substances. Now, this is, this is important, because the, the definition of anesthesia itself is to abolish pain that is accompanied with surgical or procedure stimulus. So for a CRNA that we are having patients go to sleep for procedures and surgeries and treating their pain, you can't take away controlled substances and, and allow us to do our job. Missouri is the only state where CRNAs have this extra step to jump through to get controlled substances for our patients. And then lastly, to clarify, the medication for controlled substances, again, that's only during anesthesia services provided for a surgery procedure at the request of a physician, dentist, or podiatrist.
As it relates to, to the beginning part of that with the physician, so I mean, I'm hearing that, that the rationale for this is, well, physicians, dentist, podiatrist, if they're on, if they're the ones performing the surgery or the procedure, well, they, they don't want to do the supervisional. But it's not changing the on-the-ground fact that there is always going to be a physician in, in the room overseeing what they're doing in the building, certainly, when, whatever is happening, because by definition of patients in surgery, there's someone performing the surgery, and that's not a CRNA presumably doing that.
Exactly.
And in which case, my, well, so just to finish is, is, I see this as less actually changing any practice, true, which I think has been admitted, like, has been stated in your testimony, but I do see it as a significant sharking of liability if, is the main concern less about CRNAs in this and more about doctors and physicians who just don't want to be responsible for, for CRNA activities that maybe they admittedly don't know much about?
Yes. Yeah. And I have a colleague here today that's going to talk specifically about the presumed liability and the liability that is, that is put upon the surgeon, though that does not relate to case law. So case law shows that, shows that there is no difference in liability to a surgeon, dentist, podiatrist, again, no matter who is providing the anesthetic. But it, again, just that word "supervision" makes it seem as though they should be responsible. And then also to clarify, so in, in hospitals that, this bill allows hospitals to choose their own supervision model, so we fully recognize that mainly in metropolitan areas, they will likely keep the same supervision that, that is depicted in, in the current statute. So this would just allow rural facilities and their medical boards, made up of physicians of, of the, their local region, it would allow them to decide what's best for our patient population.
Thank you.
Representative Focal?
Thank you. Can you, can you quickly talk me through, a lot of the conversations we've had today regarding the earlier bills was about education. So can you quickly walk me through the differences between what you guys do and what, what training perhaps a general dentist would have as it relates to administering anesthesia?
Yes, absolutely. So, CRNA starts out with a bachelor's degree in nursing, it's a four-year degree. Then we work as a nurse. We are required to work in an ICU for a minimum of one year, though the COA reports that the average before admittance is four and a half years, working in an ICU. Then we are admitted into graduate school, which is a minimum of a 36-month program, after which we pass a national certification exam before we are allowed to practice. A dentist, I think, takes various rotations through certain things. It's actually funny, we had a, at the hospital that I work at, we train oral, maxillary, facial surgeons, so surgeons that do surgery on the face and the jaw. So they start out as dentists, they come to us and do a rotation with us in the OR for several months before they can go on to, to practice surgery. But just ironically, thinking that I was training the dentist in anesthesia, and he, according to our current law, was allowed to give, just like fentanyl, for example, and I was not. And I was, I was educating him on the practice of anesthesia. Dentists in general have no specific training in the administration of anesthesia, similar to podiatrists as well.
To inquire, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. A clarification, when, when you said earlier that you would not be able to operate a pain clinic, I, I want to know if that's accurate, because you said if there was a physician referral, you could provide the services. I don't know that there's anything in here that says you can't, I mean, under the new conditions, that you can't operate the clinic, which would be a change.
Yeah. So, according to our current state statutes, we have to practice within our scope and our training. I was not trained in pain, so I would not be allowed to go open up a pain clinic. There is a fellowship that a CRNA can obtain, so after two years of being a CRNA, you go back for a 12-month fellowship in chronic pain management. There is another certification after the end of that training, and then you're certified to practice in chronic pain management. But again, if a CRNA is, is not trained in that, then that's not within their scope and, and would not be allowed within the statutes.
Okay. Because again, I, that was unclear, since you said that as long as you had the referral, you could provide the treatment, and, and I'm still not sure that you can't operate that clinic. And are you able to do spinal stimulators?
So, no. Spinal cord stimulators are not taught extensively within the pain certification course, so, no, CRNAs would not be placing spinal cord stimulators. Even after the pain certification, those CRNAs would still need a patient to be, a request from the physician, dentist, or podiatrist. So even though they're certified, they still have to have a request or a referral.
But once you have the request, can you then follow up on that?
For those that are pain-certified, yes, that is within their scope and training.
So you can provide that? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Further questions? If not, thank you very much, and thank you for your testimony. So we are ready for a opposition. Representative Marshall, when you're ready to start, please.
Thank you, Representative Hayden and members of the committee. My name is Julie Marshall, I'm from Columbia, Missouri. I'm here to oppose House Bill 329, and I will try to avoid hitting too many of these topics, I think, that have already come up. I am a physician anesthesiologist. I have worked with CRNAs in medical direction and supervision for over 14 years, and I do agree that CRNAs are a very important part of our practice and part of the healthcare team in Missouri, and I do appreciate everything that they do for Missourians. I'm in academic medicine, I have spent five years as a residency program director, I write exam questions for our national board exam, and I am the current president of the Missouri Society of Anesthesiologists. So I appreciate the prior testimony about the reasons for discussing bringing this bill forward. I did speak with her last week about some of the, the things that were in this bill and the reasons for bringing it forward, and those were some of the questions, the items that were brought to, to the floor. So the three reasons that were brought forward were, number one, member request, when they had surveyed their members, that there was a compliance with some of the, or a question about compliance with some of these controlled substances, which she alluded to. And this was actually a question that had come up back in 2017 with BNDD, and we had addressed that and got some language clarified about what that meant for orders for controlled substances. So in the state of Missouri, we do not need to have an order for every controlled substance if a CRNA is under the direct supervision of an anesthesiologist or is working with a protocol under the supervision of another physician. So that was the, the questions brought forward about if it is a surgeon, podiatrist, or dentist. So in Missouri, every procedure is supervised by either a physician anesthesiologist or by one of these other providers. Protocols are in place at facilities in order to have the, the appropriate kind of guidelines for CRNAs to practice, and if they need to go outside those guidelines, then they need to just clarify and request that they go beyond that for the person who is supervising them. So for, if you're in a procedure, if you have somebody there, you know, potentially in the room, that you can just ask, you know, I need to go beyond those guidelines. Anesthesia is a unique specialty. We are dealing with patients that are not involved in their care, they have entrusted us in a very vulnerable time in their lives, for us to give very powerful medications that control their physiology. So they decrease their blood pressure, may make it so they are not breathing independently, they may change the way that their heart contracts. And so, you know, there are a lot of things that may change in an anesthetic, and having a physician available to immediately respond is very important. So I am getting a wave. I was going to provide a few details as far as data, and some of my colleagues were, will cover some of these as far as some of the language. We actually have 45 states with physician involvement in the United States. Supervision may not be the word that is used, it may be other things such as direction. There is data showing a difference in outcome for independent studies. So a 2017 study looking at 200,000 patients showed a 6.9 access deaths per 1,000 complications when there was only a CRNA involved in care. There is a 80% higher unexpected disposition when CRNAs are providing care versus an anesthesiologist. For opt-out states, there is an 8.7% increase in inpatient costs with an average of $1,800. And we have both national data and data in the state of Missouri that physicians want, or patients, Missourians want physicians involved in their care.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, Representative Focal?
Thank you. I want to follow up on a question that a representative asked earlier. So would, I can't, I can't think of an example, but would there ever be a time where a CRNA was providing a service that there wasn't a physician nearby in the building that was getting ready to, whether it's oral surgery or any other type of surgery? Would, is there ever an example of a time that wouldn't be the case?
I, I'm not going to be able to say an absolute, but
Of course.
... facilities have a protocol also for those, you know, if there's, if there's, I'm not sure if I can think of one off the top of my head.
Okay. So your concerns related to, in case of a medical emergency, would those same providers not be on-site already, which would alleviate the concern of having someone there in case of a medical emergency? Do you get what I'm trying to ask? I'm just trying to understand how those things intersect.
So if there's, if there's guidelines with these protocols, there may be a certain level of, of like a vasopressive substance, something to increase blood pressure, that's within the protocol. And if it's beyond that, is involving the physician in order to continue to make guidelines and choices? And physicians I have spoken to who are surgeons on this, they want to be involved. And honestly, the, our American College of Surgeons and the Missouri chapter of the American College of Surgeons support continuing physician-led care. They have written letters, and I'm sure we can get copies to everyone if they don't have it. So, you know, when, when things are going wrong with the patient that they have brought to a procedure, those physicians want to know and want to continue in that discussion and be involved in directing the care.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Do you think those sentiments would remain true for general dentists and podiatrists who maybe aren't as confident in those emergency management situations but are operating as the supervising physician or dentist in the case?
I work with podiatrists, I don't work with any dentists, and the podiatrists I work with are very involved in the care of their patients. If there's something that's changing, they always do want to be involved in the discussion. So, you know, it's, they can delegate what they feel is appropriate to the CRNA and each facility and each setup, just like I think with the last bill you heard, there's a lot of variability in what things may be out there, but that's, that's up to the facility and the physician.
Okay. That was helpful. Thank you.
Other questions? Representative, this is your first, first query, and I am so happy that you're involved tonight. Oh, yeah, it's real, now, Representative.
Yeah, the microphone didn't work. Good evening, thank you. Just going back on the same subject line I brought it up, so would there be an instance where a dentist or a podiatrist or some other physician doctor overrode a CRNA when it came to anesthesia?
I have not been told of an instance that occurred. When I was speaking to our colleague from the Missouri Society of Nurse Anesthetists, I asked if there was ever a problem that they are aware of, where there was a protocol in place, and that that somehow impeded or impaired patient care. And there was no instances that was brought to me.
So there wasn't like a disagreement on how to proceed, even in an emergency situation between a CRNA and the providing surgeon or that we're aware of?
I don't have any information of one, no. But, I mean, I just don't have that information.
I mean, obviously, they'd be involved because they're performing a surgery or an operation of some sort, but if they're not going to have any input on anesthesia, I don't see why it's an issue, I guess. I don't know, I just, as a non-medical person, I'm like, well, if it's not their world, why are they?
Why? You know, if there, if there is a physician anesthesiologist involved, obviously, we are, we are bringing in that expertise. If we're in a situation where that is not available, so this is not an access issue right now, CRNAs are everywhere that they want to be in the state of Missouri, is that in order to provide that same care safely for very powerful medications, is to have protocols in place for what is considered a reasonable component of medications for that facility and that type of procedure?
I totally understand it's very delicate and important stuff, and a lot smarter than me doing it, but if the podiatrist or dentist doesn't overrule or argue with the CRNA, if there's no physician anesthesiologist, then I don't see where the concern is.
I think it's just continuing to involve them in care. So if you are providing like a sedation for a patient
Certainly.
... who is undergoing a dental procedure, and they are not doing well.
Sure.
You know, that physician, the person who is in charge of that, that procedure, needs to have that ability to be part of the discussion and part of the determination of, if they, if the CRNA involved wants to continue to provide additional sedating medications, and is going beyond what's considered to be in the bounds of the standard care, that's kind of an important thing for that dentist to be able to guide whether or not that procedure is going the way that they want it to as well.
Well, obviously, it's not going the way they wanted, because that's who would be in the situation
Right.
... upstream. But with, but with their limited experience and knowledge of anesthesia, wouldn't they normally just go with the person who's trained in that?
And in this instance, in that instance, if they choose to do that in a very limited instance of a, of a dental procedure, then they would have that right to choose to do so.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand. Thank you.
Patty, Representative Lewis, I'm sorry?
To inquire.
Granted.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much for, for being here and sticking around and for hours and hours. I'll try and be brief here. But I just, you said something about like protocols.
Right.
Who, who writes the anesthesia protocols when there aren't any CRNAs?
I will defer potentially to how these have been written in the past, but we, there have been protocols provided to facilities that have come under review, this was years ago when this was set up, as examples, and those were provided to facilities if they needed to have a template in order to And those were provided to facilities if they needed to have a template in order to help guide care. I believe all facilities that, you know, should have them available. I know we have discussed, when we were discussing with the, you know, concerns about bringing forth this bill, that there might be some facilities that have some outdated ones. If that was a concern, I am, I and the society are happy to help working through that again. But I believe those were helped, you know, put together back when this program was initially started. Okay. I couldn't give you a year on it. I'm sorry.
Okay. So, and then a different question, though, just quick yes or no. So is a physician anesthesiologist required to deliver safe anesthesia care?
Yes, I would hope so.
So then, what would your answer be to the 78% of hospitals or healthcare settings in rural Missouri that don't have an anesthesiologist present?
Right. So there are some payment issues. One of my colleagues will come up and talk about that in a little bit more detail. But there is a discrepancy in the way that CRNAs can be paid in some of their rural settings compared to how anesthesiologists can be paid. So there's, at a federal level, they can be paid under Medicare Part A, where we get paid under Medicare Part B. And I will let my colleague kind of address that in a little bit more detail. But it sets up a payment discrepancy in those two settings.
But I wasn't asking about pay. I was asking about like safe, safe care of anesthesia.
Right. So there is, there is a challenge of getting the payment at those rural, so at those rural areas in order to support anesthesiologists. There is obviously a lot of CRNAs in the rural areas that are serving there. When we do get into situations with opt-out states, we don't see an increase in CRNA moving to rural areas. It's, it's pretty much the same number. But, but we don't, this isn't an access issue question in Missouri either. Right now, every place that wants a CRNA in a rural area can continue to have it with our current system.
Thank you.
Further questions? If not, we thank you for your testimony and appreciate your time and especially particularly staying as late as you have. Okay, and somebody in support?
Good evening. Thank you, Representative Hayden and members of the committee for allowing me to share this wonderful evening with you guys here. It's an introduction. I am a, my name is Sam Haddie. I'm a board-certified neurosurgeon. I practice in St. Louis. I am department chair of surgery for Mercy Clinic South and also medical director of spine and pain for Mercy East. I am testifying in support of HB 329. I have had the unique opportunity to work with a solo CRNA practice in rural Missouri as well as with CRNAs and anesthesiologists in St. Louis. At both locations that I've worked at, the CRNA care was excellent. I honestly saw no difference in the care between anesthesia provided by my solo CRNAs in rural Missouri and the CRNA physician collaboration team that we have in St. Louis. At both locations, my patients received excellent care. I was impressed with the quality of care done in rural Missouri. We were able to do quite a few surgeries. The bill intended before you will not remove the physician involvement, will not change the relationship between the CRNAs at least the surgeons. I think we're all here for the patient's best interest, and they've done a decent, they've done a very good job. As a surgeon, I would prefer not to be liable and in charge of something that I am not an expert or trained in, although I would be happy to collaborate and work with them toward improving the patient care. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from anybody.
Questions? Representative Keithley?
Thank you. To inquire?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to not be liable for a lot of things in my business, too. So I, my, a question I have is, I'm, in your role as a neurosurgeon, how many of your patients are you meeting with pre-op, build up to surgery, how far in advance?
Well, I mean, obviously, with every patient, I'll see them pre-operatively, both in my office, I'll see them the day of surgery, I'll see them post-operatively, and we'll follow up with them in the clinic afterwards.
And how much involvement do they have in a pre-op with the CRNA or the anesthesiologist, whoever's providing that and the buildup to that?
You might want to ask them about that. They have their own specific areas that they ask about questions. I do my area based on what I check for my neurosurgery stat, surgery that I'm going to proceed, proceed with. So I don't want to answer something that I'm not an expert in, so I would defer to them to answer what questions they do and what they do pre-operatively.
And then in terms of choosing a CRNA team or staff person, who's making that decision ultimately?
So I did, I had influence if I had preferences on somebody that I worked with, whether it were personality issues or just people that, you know, you liked more like you would in the other field. But I did not make those choices. They were assigned to me by the staff, whoever's running the board, or the anesthesiologist group had some sort of process for putting people in my room.
Okay. Thank you.
Representative Fogle?
Just a few quick questions. When you put a patient under, for lack, I mean, I don't have the right terminology, when a CRNA puts a patient under, are there things that regulatory guidelines on how close you have to stay in proximity to that patient as a surgeon? Like, is there anything that says you have to be in the building if your patient's under or anything that says you have to be within a certain yard or feet?
Yes.
I was like, miles, not the right one. Certain yards or certain feet within the patient that you're being treated? I'm trying to get to the heart of this in case of a medical emergency situation and how close a surgeon would be to the patient.
Most hospitals will require you to be in the building. You can't go sign in, do your pre-op consent, et cetera, and leave and go to a clinic or see a patient in another facility or another building. They won't, that's A, not good care, and most times not allowed by hospital laws.
Okay. But that would be dependent on the hospital. There's nothing in any other...
Not that I know of.
Okay. Thanks.
Representative?
To inquire?
Go ahead.
Can you tell me in the rural communities that you were speaking of, what types of procedures you were doing there? Were they different?
Sure. The community was Rolla, Missouri, and it was kyphoplasties, lumbar discectomies, lumbar decompressions, and anterior cervical discectomies and fusions.
Okay. Thanks.
Could you repeat those? No. Okay. Representative Sykes?
Yes, to inquire?
Go ahead.
Would you say that the training for CRNAs is greater in scope than what you've received and yet you're to be placed in a supervisory position? Do you think they're more than qualified to be self-sufficient and self-supervising because of their training?
Well, as a neurosurgeon, I'm supposed to know everything.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, but these are actually, the training for us for anesthesia is much, it's limited. It's what we learn on the, on the job.
Okay. Thank you.
Representative Lewis?
Just to inquire.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Thanks for being here. I just want to kind of talk about like an emergency because I think that sounds pretty scary to a lot of people, emergency. And I worked critical care, ICU, and academic facilities. And so when we think of a, and correct me if I'm wrong, but when we think of like an emergency or, you know, code blue, you know, you, anesthesia or CRNAs are the first to come to the rescue, to protect the airway. That is what they are trained to do. So you are in good hands with your physician, anesthesiologist, and your CRNA, you know, they're the ones who come running and intubate the patient. So I don't know, just my, my thoughts would, do you have any comments on that?
Yes. I don't respond to many codes.
Right.
Okay. Unless you have a head bleed or you have a serious problem that needs some sort of craniotomy, I have very little to offer. And so I kind of make sure that there's somebody running the show and I move on to my work. If I'm the only person around, I will do the best that I can in that room. But I am very, so specialized that my area of expertise does not extend past neurosurgery to a significant extent, unfortunately.
Thank you so much.
Further questions? If not, thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And support oppositions?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the ability to come talk to you. I commend the committee's stamina for allowing us to talk about something that's very important to us. So your stamina and being here is, is a real good thing for us, so I appreciate it. I'm Matt Casey. I'm a physician anesthesiologist in St. Louis. I work for Western Anesthesia. I have possibly a slightly different perspective to come before you. My oldest sister, who is my greatest influence to become and to get into the medical field, is a pediatric nurse practitioner. And my wife is a nurse anesthetist. So I definitely hear, I have a different perspective on some of these issues than maybe some because of the conversations I have at home. Both of those individuals would not practice in an independent setting. Both of them love the collaboration that they have with their physicians. They learn from their physicians, their physicians learn from them. They think that the care that patients get from a care team model is better than them alone. And the vast majority, I've been doing this for 20 years and working in an anesthesia care team model my whole career, the vast majority of nurse anesthetists that I work with feel that same way. I really would love to hear the argument that my experience, my training, combined with a nurse anesthetist's training, provides the exact same care as one of us alone. It makes absolutely no sense to me that two people's experience that are different, their educations that are different, can come together and work together collaborative and wouldn't provide a better product and better patient care than one alone. I would love to hear that argument, and I never have. Couple of questions that have come up that I've heard since I've been here. One is the, the setting of how, how does this rural anesthesia happen and do you think it's worse without a physician? And I think definitely yes. I think we would love to have physician involvement for the exact reason that I just mentioned. Another question was asked about, is there a time when a nurse anesthetist would be alone without a physician, a podiatrist, or a dentist? I think maybe you're getting to a point of possibly situations like a pain, interventional pain clinic, a ketamine clinic, a medical spa, things like that are where this could possibly lead to nurse anesthetists or nurse practitioners practicing alone without any type of supervision or collaboration with a physician. And lastly, I find it very short-minded that people that come up in front of you say that the care is the exact same, we use the same practice parameters, we use the same techniques, we use the same decision-making. I won't go into the weeds because we don't have time, and I'd love to go into the weeds with you on this. But every practice, maybe I shouldn't say every because that always gets you in trouble, but almost all practice parameters that are commonly used in anesthesia have been developed by research and clinical data developed by physicians. Our peer-reviewed research is out, is unmatched. Our quality and safety initiatives over the last 50 years are the envy of every specialty in anesthesia. Every little minute detail that becomes second nature for every CRNA and every physician, including how much anesthesia gas to use and what's the appropriate number, was based on physician research that created that. So the people that say that physicians aren't needed, that our, our care is the exact same and we don't need them, they use the physician's data and all the research that we've done over the last 60 years, and then they say we're not necessary. I think that's very short-sighted. Thank you. I'm here to respond to any questions.
Representative Nixon Clark, please.
To inquire?
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I hadn't heard that they were trying to take your position. Correct. My question is, previously, it was testified that there is an issue with getting paid in the rural areas for anesthesiologists, correct?
I think the way physician, and where, the way care is paid for by Medicare and Medicaid is different based on a physician in rural areas, yes.
Sure. And with that being said, and with the concerns of not being enough anesthesiologists in the rural area, what would be your solution?
Getting more physicians. We don't have, you know, we have a national crisis of anesthesia personnel, of medicine in all, in all aspects, not just primary care, not just anesthesia, in everywhere. We, we look at different states that have different rules on supervision and direction. They still have problems with access to care in rural areas. Missouri isn't the only state in the country that has problems with rural medicine. Every state does. So we need more physicians, we need more nurses, we need more nurse practitioners, and that's a money problem.
Sure. And so for the last four and a half hours, we've established that there's a lack of physicians, right? And so in the meantime, what happens? People are dying. So how do we fix that right now?
Well, we do a couple of things. One, we try to make the physicians as available in as many situations as possible. You will get data on the counties that don't have a physician available. You should also get data on how many procedures are being done in these facilities. The vast majority of procedures in this state are being done in Kansas City, Columbia, St. Louis. Of, you know, 90% of all procedures are being done in these places. So are we solving a problem for 10%? Maybe. But are we trying to create a system that doesn't incentivize people to go into medicine and go into, become physicians? I think we might be. And I think we might be creating a problem that people say, man, I don't want to go through four years. I, it took me three years to get into med school. Every part of that, my, 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 my journey to medicine, there was an obstacle. And at that obstacle, I could have gone, and I was instructed by a couple of people, why don't you go into nursing? It's going to be shorter and you're going to get there faster. I wanted the privilege to be called a physician and to have a patient-physician relationship. I think that is something that is so important to me that after three years or after not getting to med school and going to a master's program, starting a PhD program, until I got into med school, I would be, I didn't want to waver from that goal. And I don't want to create systems and, and laws that dissuade people like me from going into medicine. And I think some of these might.
Sure. And so is it safe to say that your definitive answer, that the 10%, it doesn't matter?
No.
Okay.
It means that we have to do better ways to get stuff. And if, if we say that my job is not important, that my input doesn't mean anything, if that meant that all of a sudden thousands of nurse anesthetists were going to come and move to the rural areas, maybe we have to really think about that. And maybe I'd have to say something different at this mic. But that's not going to happen. The nurse anesthetists, just like physicians, work where there are jobs and where it's, where they want to live. And that's been proven for many years. So trying to create access by giving someone more authority doesn't create access, and it hasn't worked for a long time, in my opinion.
Thank you so much.
Representative Fogle?
Thank you. Are there any, is there any service that you provide that, let me rephrase this, is there any medical service that is provided that a physician anesthesiologist has to provide the anesthesia for versus the CRNA? Or is, like, are there any very labor-intensive or very, you know what I'm trying to ask?
Kind of. And it's probably facility-dependent. It's probably comfort level and experience-dependent. I know in my facility, and I work with nurse anesthetists and certified anesthesiologist assistants, they do a broad range of physical activities into the anesthetic care. I am the one that is called in our facility to handle emergency intubations that require a fiber optic intubation. In my training, I did over 1,000 fiber optic intubations in four years, and I led a training program for four years in Chicago before I moved back to St. Louis in difficult airway management. So that's one way with difficult airway where my training is far superior to even some of my physician colleagues and where I'm relied on to handle those type of things. That doesn't mean that I'm the only person that can do it, and sometimes I try to teach and help people because they need to learn some skills in this area. But that's one way that I do things that most nurse anesthetists don't get the same experience that I do in, in the training.
And can you clarify for me, are you here testifying on behalf of Mercy or are you here testifying on behalf of yourself?
No, I work at Mercy. I work for a private, a private anesthesiology group. So I'm here for myself. I'm here as a member of the Missouri Society of Anesthesia.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Representative Sykes, please.
Thank you. To inquire. First, I'd like to state that everyone on this committee would appreciate your service and what you've done in the medical field. I think it's out... I think it's outstanding, your work as a physician and the specific things that you've done. But earlier you mentioned collaborative practice, so I have to go right back to the piece of legislation that we're talking about. And on page two, lines 32 through 35, it states, "Nothing in this subsection shall be construed to prohibit or prevent a certified registered nurse anesthetist from entering into a collaborative practice arrangement under section 334.104." So again, if they choose in the area in which they live to maintain being in a collaborative practice arrangement, they can do that according to this legislation. But just like I spoke in favor of the last bill that was presented, this would give these individuals a choice whether or not to remain in the collaborative practice or to go off and do things a little bit more on their own.
Two things. One, just because you don't have to be into a collaborative practice region, doesn't mean that, I, I think there are a lot of nurse anesthetists that would choose to it. I, I testified to that early. My wife is one of them. She would choose. I wonder where that would go down the road, especially with hospital administrators who oftentimes forget about patient care, sometimes forget about what they want, and are all only looking at a dollar value on something. And would they prohibit? And would they create a system in a hospital that said, "I'm going to not pay the physician as much because I don't have to?" And if they want to stay, maybe they could. Or if the nurse anesthetist wanted to work with them, they could. I think that creates a terrible idea and a terrible opportunity for hospital administrators to meddle in something that they really shouldn't.
Do you think that's happening in the 42 or 44 states where they do not have the CRNA supervision or whatever you want to call it, based on the last testimony?
I think the majority of anesthesia care, even in those states, are some version of a collaborative care team with a physician. But because you can't, for myself, when I work in the care team and to bill Medicare and Medicaid, I have to perform six vital functions to, to say that I've performed my duty and to be reimbursed for that. That becomes pretty onerousome, and a lot of places will choose not to bill in that way, and they'll bill as a supervision, not a direction, which is a lesser standard, because they don't want to get audited and they don't want to find that they're not performing all six steps. So I think a lot of the data that you're shown says that medical supervision or less than medical direction is happening, and it's happening some places, but I think a lot more places are doing anesthesia care team and not billing for it because they're worried that they don't completely comply with all of the regulations.
Good, thank you.
So I think some of the data is a little misleading.
Okay, appreciate it.
Is this your second time, Representative Keatley, or not?
No, not on this.
No, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. To inquire.
Go ahead.
And then just to, to Representative Science's point on this, well, I mean, I guess to, and, and maybe this question would be better suited to someone who is, I guess, here on behalf of a facility itself. I mean, I, I do see this as restricting. It may, that may not be the intent, but I, I do see restrictive language in this regarding collabora, collaboration. I mean, it, if you look at section seven on page 10, "A certified registered nurse anesthe, anesth, anesthetist, as defined in subsection eight, shall not be required to enter into a collaborative practice arrangement." It does not say who's requiring them. I, I mean, if I, if I were a CRNA, I, I could read that and say, no, my facility can't make me enter into this collaborative. I'm, I'm completely independent as far as the decision to go into collaboration. I don't know if you can speak to that as, as whether facilities have these, these collaboration requirements beyond supervision or if they would seek to input those, but I, I'm curious how restrictive that would actually be on the facility. I don't know if that's the intent behind how that language is, but I think that's how it reads.
I can't comment to it, but it does worry us, and that's part of, part of the language that worries us and what we see as a possible, you know, down-the-road effect.
Thank you.
I'll raise my own hand. When we look at rural practice and we look at, you know, and I am in an area that has had two hospitals close, and we are desperate, but is that desperation caused in part by how we do Medicare and Medicaid? And is the reason we're getting CRAs at these hospitals is because we're billing, getting percent of bill? And administrators cannot pay for an anesthesiologist because of Medicare and Medicaid as a percent of bill, which is lower in my area, which is 40 miles from Columbia than it is in Columbia? Is that correct?
I, I think that is correct. I, I think the other part of it is, it's very clear that complicated procedures are done better at places that do a lot of them. Every time that I'm on call, not even on call, every time I'm working in St. Louis, we get a transfer from one of Mercy's rural hospitals. Every day, there is something added to our operating room schedule because it's something that isn't done in the rural place. And that's not a bad thing. I think that's good for the patient. When you go to a place that's doing more cases, you have a surgeon who's doing more of one thing, they do a better job. That's been very clearly documented in, in many studies. So I don't disparage the rural hospitals from shipping patients up to, up to an urban center, but that's the, that's the reality. And that's why we have 50 anesthesiologists where I work. That's why we have 70 anesthetists at where I work, because we're doing more cases, because we're doing more complicated things. The bread and butter, easy procedures are done in these places. The last thing I'll say is anesthesia has become very safe. And so when you look at, oh, are, are the outcomes better with or without? The outcomes are good no matter what you do because of the 50 to 60 years of work, groundbreaking work on patient safety that has been led by physicians in the anesthesia That can't be overlooked, that all of that work to create a safe environment shouldn't be used as a, as a reason to, this, I don't know, to, to, to take away from the physicians that helped create that.
As a rural legislator, I'm con firmly convinced that our Medicare/Medicaid system is choking our rural hospitals on their payment systems, and we're, a lot of what we're talking about of lack of rural care is due to government interference in the form of Medicaid, Medicare, and Obamacare. And what's designed to help has actually hastened the destruction of rural, rural medical systems. And if you're in one of those areas and you think you're getting a fair shake, I think you're, I think you're sadly mistaken. And I think that's, part of what we're discussing here is not whether we have an anesthetists, I think it's a function of the payment system we're getting on Medicare, Medicaid, and other systems. And that, that's another bandbox I'm on, and I'm through. But other questions? By the way, I think you could run for politics. I've been married 50 years, and you danced around that of hacking your wife off when you go home tonight. I thought marvelously, so. I wish I could do as well when I get home tonight. So thank you very much for your testimony. Any other questions? I'm sorry, any other questions? All right, we are to someone in support. Oh, quick, quick idea, how many more would he have in support? How many in opposition? Tell mama breakfast is coming in, I guess, so. Is there other room still? Police making sure we're not convicts in here, so. Okay, all right. Because of numbers, that would take us about to 11:30, what we have right now, we need to really speed it up and cut them down. Go ahead.
All right, good evening. My name is Dr. Andrew Palmasano. I'm a board-certified orthopedic surgeon from Jackson County. I support this bill for a couple of different reasons I'll get into. First off, the operating room is very much a team effort, as we've discussed already tonight. We each have our, our role to do and our specific area of expertise. I complete complex joint reconstructive surgeries, and the CRNA in the room performs the anesthetic, and that allows me to do what I do. Just as the CRNA is not qualified to supervise a surgery that I complete, I don't feel I'm qualified to supervise or to perform their role. By having the operating surgeon sign off or supervise the CRNA, liability that is not warranted or appropriate is now shifted onto that surgeon, podiatrist, or dentist. The operating surgeon has enough liability for the procedure itself, and I don't want to take on the liability of the anesthetic or the CRNA. So I think shifting this, this liability to the appropriate provider makes logical sense. Along with this, I feel many surgeons would, would agree, and they do not want to take on the liability and practice in the areas where there is excess liability, as we've been discussing. I believe the burden serves to limit care and surgical services and specialties in these areas of the state, which are predominantly CRNA-only, and removing this barrier will allow better access and better care for our patients. Lastly, I've spoken to many of my surgical colleagues, as well as the anesthesia physicians that I work with on a daily basis, none of which have opposed this bill, and all of which agree that removing the burden from the surgeon, placing the liability on the person that's actually performing these, these duties would only serve our communities and our patients better moving forward. Opened any questions?
Questions? I, I, I have one real quick. So if you're doing that, we've had a lot of discussions earlier on about liability, you're just saying basically it shifts the liability of CRNA, and necessarily, if we shift liability, their malpractice has to go up, correct? If you're shifting liability from yourself because of that liability, then it's going to be on the CRNA, so somebody's going to have to have that responsibility, either the hospital or the CRNA, correct? I mean, I've got lawyers here, so.
So honestly, I don't know.
I mean, that's my question, somebody, the liability doesn't go away, so by shifting it, it, their, their malpractice has to go up if you're shifting responsibility?
Potentially, honestly, I don't know about CRNA's liability insurance.
Okay. But, but you would feel your responsibility, your liability would go down?
It would go down. I don't think it would lower my malpractice, you know? That'd be nice, but.
Well, with insurance, it probably increases both of your liability. Both of your malpractice goes up, I would guess, but I don't know that. But that, that was a question, so you don't know the answer to that.
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay. Representative Lewis?
To inquire.
Go ahead.
Good evening, thank you for being here. I just wanted to just make sure I heard correctly. You said none of the, none of your group opposes this, is that correct? And how, excuse me, how many surgeons are in your group?
So we, we have about, about 40 surgeons, and I've spoken to, you know, friends of mine, and I, I was at a previous practice that I've spoke with a couple of those as well. And it's all basically the, the same concern that we have is liability, and a lot of us, you know, we practice outside of Kansas City, and, you know, we don't want to, I don't want to go to some of these communities just because of that, because of the liability issues and things. And, you know, it was discussed that some of the, some of the particular surgeries, you know, more complex surgeries aren't performed in some of the outlying areas. It, we're really talking, you know, bread and butter cases and surgeries and things like that, that, you know, don't need to go to a big community or a big, you know, urban area, but that allows more access to care. So even the anesthesiologists that we have at our hospital, they agreed with the, you know, with that, that they thought that that would allow, you know, better access to care. There's already CRNA-only areas of the state, you know, quite a bit of them, and that allows some of those, you know, more standard-type cases to stay in those places. A lot of my patients, I do a lot of revision surgeries, so I do hip and knee replacements, and a lot of broken ones or failed ones, they come in from two, three hours away. A lot of these patients are 80 years old, they got to drive, you know, quite a bit, they get hotel rooms, they have, you know, family come with them. So some of these things, if they can stay near their community, it's a lot safer for them. But clearly, if they're more complex things or more, more complex patients in general, they're going to still go to the big city. But it's, you know, it's to allow better access to care for the majority of people in those areas.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. And I just want to quickly point out, I want to thank all the people in Scrubs who aren't going to be testifying, but are hanging in here, showing they're either support or opposition. It's really, really nice to have you all involved, so just wanted to give a shout-out to all of you just being part of the process.
Representative Fogel.
Thank you, to inquire.
Go ahead.
Can you, we've covered this already somewhat, but I just want a, a specific answer or a, or more technical answer. When you're either pre-op, in-surgery, or post-op, are you in the moment directing the dosage and the meds that the CRNA is pushing?
So I, I am not, you know, to tell you a little bit, you know, of my anesthesia training, when, when I'm in, when I was in residency, we had to do a month of anesthesia. We had to do an oral exam at the end of that to, to test out of it. I asked on my first day if I could take that, that oral exam, and I did, and I passed it, I took a month off. So I did not have any specific training on that, that's not part of orthopedic residency. It was really just to have anesthesia, to have bodies at the place I was at. But, you know, I, I don't know the dosing for, you know, I know the medications of propofol and fentanyl and things, but I have no idea about the dosing or how you would, you know, keep a patient at a certain level or what MAC or any of those types of things. With that said, doesn't mean I'm not involved in the care, you know, if I'm, if I'm completing a surgery and they're, they start, you know, spraying blood, I, you know, try to say, okay, what's going on, how's your blood pressure, that type of thing? Or if I notice that, hey, I don't hear that beep very frequently anymore, you know, why are they at 40, you know, heart rate? Well, then, yeah, you're involved in that, but I'm not telling them what medications to push, and I have no idea what to tell them.
Okay, so when you walk into the.
Just like they can't tell me what to do when I'm, you know, operating.
Right. When you walk into the surgery room, that's already taken place, and now you're presenting the patients in front of you. At what point are you consenting or signing off in that collaborative practice, the dosage and the meds that were pushed? When you sign the chart?
It'd be after, yeah, after the procedure, but, but, you know, and they have, they have their protocols and things, but, but yeah, I, I can't give them any specifics of, you know, they couldn't ask me, they could ask me, and I'd, I'd just look at them, like, I'm not sure how to help you with that.
Okay.
So I'm in the room, yes, and I'm still part of the care team, but that's what they've went to school, went to training for. In the majority of cases, if not all cases, I'm in, there are anesthesia physicians at my facility, but they never in the room. They're not the ones performing the day in and day out, you know, in the trenches kind of, of the procedures. And to be honest with you, a lot of them, you know, we'll do spinal anesthetics for some of our, some of our replacements, and if, if, you know, if you're not familiar with them, you know, basically you're putting a needle in their back, trying to numb up some of the, some of the nerve roots so that we can perform the surgery. If they're not able to get it, then you would call in your anesthesia attending. Well, they come in and oftentimes they go, if they couldn't get it, they do it all day long, I can't get it. And so, you know, each have their roles, and they're, they're necessary, but, you know, specifically for liability and talking about access, I think that's, that's what this is, this is about in my mind.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Keatley.
Thank you, to inquire.
Go ahead.
I just want to clarify some, as, as far as I understand it, I, I, I don't think that this would really shift liability at all. I think it, I think it just removes you from the liability or removes the physician. I mean, a CRNA carries malpractice as CRNA, at least that's my understanding of CR. If, 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 if I had, if I, I, I'm a lawyer, if I had a client, and I don't do malpractice, medical malpractice, but if I had a client who had an issue go on in surgery, I would, I would sue the hospital, I would sue the doctor, I would sue the CRNA too. So I mean, everyone's on the hook for the liability. You're not shifting liability, you're just removing yourself from that liability equation. So I, I mean, that's how I understand it, and I want to make sure that, that I'm clear in understanding if that's how you see it, because that's, I, I think that's different than shifting it, saying, well, you know, the CRNA is more responsible for what, for whatever's administered. And that might be true, but, you know, and I, I would pose the same question to you about, you know, in terms of, in your experience, your, your pre-operative care with the patient versus, in your experience, the CRNA or the anesthesiologist, pre-operative care, pre-operative care? Because I, I think that's an important distinction here, when we're looking at the, the patient's involvement and how much they're vetting, how much they're controlling their team, especially if, you know, the hospital or the facility or you are seeking to remove yourself from the liability equation. I, I, I start questioning that when, when you're the one who is putting the team together, the facility's the one who's putting the team together, and the CRNA is not necessarily being chosen by the patient. The patient's choosing you, they're not choosing the anesthesia team to deliver it necessarily. Unless, I, I could be wrong about how that plays out, but that's. Unless, I could be wrong about how that plays out, but that's, in my, in the couple surgeries I've had in my life, that's how it's played out.
Yeah. So, I mean, I agree. For, for, you know, each facility will have their CRNA team or have their anesthesia team, and, you know, that's not necessarily the, the patient choosing that person. For what I do in total joints, we have, you know, you either talk with the CRNA or the anesthesiologist beforehand, so you have met them beforehand. Usually, it's a week or two before, so that we can develop the plan. I think talking about the liability as well, I still have plenty of liability. I just now, you know, my concern is having liability of the anesthesia itself. So if something goes wrong with anesthesia, you know, obviously, like you've mentioned, you're gonna name everybody that you possibly can, plus, you know, their family members, anybody. You know, you put it all on there and see how, see how it shakes out. I think for the anesthesia portion of it, if, if I'm not the one directing it, I didn't have to sign off on it, that type of thing, then that hopefully would remove me from it and keep the liability on the person that, that, you know, is performing that. Just like if something goes wrong in surgery, you know, in the, in the surgery that I'm doing, the CRNA or the, the, you know, anesthesia physician, they're not on the hook for that. They're not going to be named for that. So I, so shifting may not be the right term, but I think applying liability to where it should be is probably, you know, more of a correct statement.
And then if, if I could just do one more, because I think it might, might, might actually be in the interest of time, because I'll, and I'll pose this question to you, but I really mean it for, I think, anyone else who comes to testify here, because I can see myself asking this at the same time, because it's the second time I'm asking this. You said that this is about access in your mind, expanding access, and there's been a lot of conversation here tonight devoted about, devoted to expanding this to the rural areas. And I'll be honest, I'm struggling to see how this actually is going to, how this as presented is going to actually increase the amount of surgeries we're able to perform in the state of Missouri. Because although you're, although we'd be giving CRNAs this, this independence within each surgery, the CRNAs aren't really the bottleneck here. I think it's, it's the physicians who have to be involved in the surgery one way or the other. So, I mean, you're addressing the CRNA independence issue, but you're not addressing the much larger bottleneck, that is, who's going to be doing the underlying surgery? You still have to have a physician in the room. So if, if we're talking about this in context of whether a liability shield for you is a good idea, let's talk about that. But I, if, if there's, if we're talking about this in the context of, oh, this is a good idea for expanding access to rural areas, I don't really see that right now, and I'm trying to figure out how, how does this actually accomplish that?
I think it's, it's access of CRNAs. I think it is access of certain surgical specialties. With that said, you know, I'm a subspecialist, and I have, I do a lot of cases that have a lot of liability associated with it and doing a lot of revision work. And, you know, going to some of these outlying places where I would have to be the supervising physician for the anesthesia, honestly, it's easier to stay in the city and not have to deal with that. So I do agree with you, I think it's a bottleneck, but I think that by, you know, releasing some of that, at least in my, in my opinion and from talking to my colleagues, they would be more likely to go to those areas to perform these surgeries. So it's not a, it's not an access to CRNAs, it's an access to the care that, you know, a lot of us just don't want to, you know, it's more, more liability that we have to deal with, more issues, you know, more burden, you know. You know, some of my, some of my colleagues have tried to learn a bit more about anesthesia before they go to some of these, some of these places. I'm just like, you know, they, I did, I did, you know, six years of training after medical school, and none of which was anesthesia. I don't really want to go learn that job too, and I don't think I could appropriately. So I do agree with you, but I think the access to care is getting some of the physicians to go to those areas and remove some of the burden for that.
Questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony, and appreciate you being, spend the night. Maybe the morning, I don't know, the way we're going. They're gonna have some anesthesia pain management, I think, so. Proceed when ready.
All right. Mr. Chairman, committee members, I'm still Tim Swearingen, anesthesiologist in Springfield, Missouri. Side note, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you completely, the accountable, the Affordable Care Act was absolutely designed to crush small critical access hospitals and drive everything into mega health centers, but that is a discussion for another day. I'd like to start like Dr. Casey. My wife is also a nurse, and it's been my great privilege through my career to work with an outstanding group of nurse anesthetists. I am not anti-nurse APRN or nurse anesthetist. I am pro-physician-led care. And one of our nurse anesthetists, who I worked with throughout my entire career, always joked that we should put on a clinic for people to come and see how team-based anesthesia care is delivered. Couple things, you all know me from my last testimony, I don't belabor this. The map that Representative Cook gave you, if you look in the footnotes, they say, according to the Nursing Practice Act or the Board of Nursing, there are other statutes in those states with regard to the Board of Healing Arts, other places in regulatory statute. This is the map, according to the American Medical Association, of states that require physician involvement in anesthesia, in the green. Red is no physician involvement. I can leave that for you. To my surgical colleagues who've testified here today, we kind of danced around the issue, but it does appear that they are just interested in unloading any sort of liability that they have with regard to this procedure. I have never met a surgeon who does not want to be involved in the care of the patient. And let's, you know, don't forget that anesthesia is not just the matter of pushing drugs to put a patient to sleep. We manage blood pressure, and we need to know, you know, is their blood pressure low because they're bleeding to death, because they have sepsis, which is an overwhelming infection which causes it, because they have swelling in their brain, because they have decreased heart function, all these sorts of things. And I've not met a surgeon yet who doesn't want to be involved in a where, in those types of decisions. I'm not talking about, do I push, you know, 150 or 200 milligrams of propofol, but involvement in the anesthesia care, okay? But what, what I've heard here tonight is I would like to unload the liability. As Dr. Marshall alluded to, a letter from the American College of Surgeons and the Missouri chapter of the American College, who want to preserve physician-led anesthesia care. Couple things, again, that we've danced around here tonight. You're 100% right. I am not a fan of podiatrists or dentists being in charge, but, you know, I didn't create these rules. I think that, you know, a physician, anesthesiologist, and an anesthesia care team is the way to do it. I see my time is short, but I want to touch base on one last thing that we've danced around here all night. There is federal legislation called rural pass-through. It gives critical access hospitals, which do less than 800 procedures a year. Now, mind you, if you are doing a fee-for-service, what we call eat what you kill, you can only bill and collect on 800 procedures a year, you cannot make a living doing that. Critical access hospitals through rural pass-through have the discretion to use Medicare Part A dollars to pay for a CRNA. Why this does not include physician anesthesiologists? I have no idea. But the legislation doesn't. The, the CEOs of these hospitals do not have the discretion to do that same thing for physician anesthesiologists. So I can tell you that if we fix rural pass-through, I do know physician anesthesiologists who would love nothing more than to go back and practice in the area of their youth, where they grew up, Gentry County, Missouri. But they can't, because they can't earn a living there. But a, but a CEO of that hospital can pay a CRNA to essentially not do cases or do a very limited number of cases, still a full salary, they can make a living, and we cannot. I believe that one of our senators may be sponsoring a resolution to our Missouri delegation, congressional delegation, to try to put a fix on rural pass-through, to just simply make those dollars available to physician anesthesiologists. Any questions?
Questions? I, one, I think you are, you are very correct, is that pass-through, a lot of those nuances are killing us in rural hospitals, and killing, I know there's some CEOs and some, some office managers of rural hospitals and in asides, they're telling me that they're getting squeezed and can't help it, so. Representative Fogel?
To inquire.
Go ahead.
Just a follow-up. You know, I know you said if you were living in a perfect world, you might not include dentists, podiatrists, podiatrists and surgeons in a leader of the care team that's administering anesthesia. So can you, that, that's the reality of the situation, how the statute is now. So if your options were a surgeon, a podiatrist, or a dentist to administer anesthesia on you as the patient or a CRNA, where would your comfort level lie? And let's answer that one first.
Well, so for, you have to keep dentists and podiatrists separate because of the types of procedures they do.
Of course.
But if you're asking me if I would prefer to have a CRNA administer anesthesia without any type of physician supervision, or would I want, you know, to at least have the surgeon involved in my anesthetic care? The answer is yes, I would want the surgeon involved in the, the care.
Okay. It's, you know, we're, we're talking a lot about confidence and ability to do one's job, and it's interesting to me that we've had several surgeons now come on and basically publicly testify that they're uncomfortable providing that care, or that they don't feel like they have the competency to do it in the same way that their CRNA colleagues do. And, you know, as a patient who might one day have to undergo anesthesia, it's been interesting to hear that even they have that discomfort when we have a room full of CRNAs who are advocating for themselves, that they do have confidence in their ability to do that job. So just something that I wasn't necessarily expecting out of today's hearing, but it's been interesting to hear both sides of that perspective.
I think those surgeons, as I said, are uncomfortable with the liability that goes along with it. I would be shocked if they are not interested in being a part of the care that is provided to their patients.
Further questions? Thank you for your testimony, and thank you for hanging with us for a long time. All right. We're talking about in support.
Good evening. My name is Amy O'Brien. I live in Audrain County, and I'm the former CEO of Audrain Community Hospital. Our hospital closed in March of 2022 due to financial difficulties stemming from an ownership transition the previous year and not having enough capital to survive that significant change. The hospital did not close because of low patient volumes or an inability to recruit physicians or advanced practice providers. Access to healthcare is pivotal in a thriving community, especially in rural areas, healthcare facilities provide Missourians with necessary primary care, preventive medicine, emergency services, and surgical services. And these services would not be possible without CRNAs. Our hospital in Audrain County used all, an all-CRNA model because that is all the hospital budget would afford. Compared to physician-anesthesiologist supervision models, the CRNA-only model saves hospitals approximately 39% annually, and this unspent money can then be invested back into the hospital to support technology and staffing needs. Our patients reported having great experiences with CRNAs. We never had a complaint or a safety concern. We provided general surgery, orthopedic surgery, GYN surgery, and ophthalmic surgery. The only complaints that I ever received were from the general surgeon and the GYN surgeon, that they did not like having to sign off on the CRNA work. And at the time, I did not have a solution. So hearing about the House Bill 329, I realized that we could have a solution for surgeons that don't want to sign off on anesthesia services. We can have a solution for the CRNAs to feel valued and appreciated in our state of Missouri. We have the opportunity for CRNAs to legally do what they have been doing for years, and that is providing great anesthesia care to Missourians. Missouri is ranked 47th in overall healthcare performance. Over the last two years, we realized how important it is for healthcare organizations to have options for providing care to their patients. 2023 is the year we need to move forward in removing the red tape that clearly serves no purpose. This legislation reduces regulatory burdens on hospitals and physicians, and will allow them the flexibility to choose the supervision model that best fits their needs. So I ask you to vote in favor of House Bill 329.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none, thank you for hanging with us tonight. Next up, opposition. How many, how many, just a quick poll, how many are left in favor? So I can kind of manage time. Five? Is that the right count? Five? And how many opposed? One opposed, all right. Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Quinn Johnson. I'm a physician. I practice anesthesiology in Columbia. I practiced in Joplin for seven and a half years and have had the privilege of working in Columbia for the last 13 years. I think tonight, to keep it brief, I've, I've heard all the testimony from the previous bills that you all heard, and I, and I know there's a common theme. But I think the common theme is physician involvement in patient care provides superior care. The issue of why a physician can't be involved is varied. There's economic pressures, there's geographical pressures, there's all sorts of things. But the physician involvement and physician-led care is the best. And as a, as a state, as a group of professionals, I think we owe it to try and figure out how to provide the most optimal care we can to our patients. While there isn't a one solution or an easy solution, I think some of the things that I personally have concern with, all of the bills that have been presented tonight, but in particular this bill, is that it seems to be a little bit of an overkill. It feels like there's, we've identified an infection on somebody's arm, and we're just gonna cut it off, and let's just get rid of it. And so, there's too much red tape, let's just fix the problem, and if we just open the doors, everything will be okay. Because what these bills do is it allows for each advanced practice nurse to kind of say, and I've heard it repeatedly tonight, you're gonna help determine the extent and the parameters that you're gonna function under. And I think that's at the heart of the problem. Who's providing the oversight? Who's providing the quality? And the physician is the most advanced-trained, the person who has the most experience typically to help provide that oversight and help all of us understand what the quality needs to be and the extent and the parameters needs to be there. So physician-led care is important. So these bills, I think, again, just leave the door too wide open. Now briefly, I'm glad that it's already been addressed, where individuals have said, hey, this does not open the door to chronic pain. I have strong concerns that the language in the bill does allow for chronic pain, and it leaves it wide open because of the way that the language is written about diagnose and intervention and a few things there. I personally have had experience where we've watched individuals, and it's not all of them. I work in a care team model, and I have for 20 years, and I've had great experiences with CRNAs. It's always the 5% that you gotta worry about. And that 5% is gonna use this, this open language and the things that we have by completely extracting it and cutting off the arm to take advantage of what's going on. And chronic pain has been delved into by CRNAs in this state, and I've seen it in our own, in my own city in Columbia, where CRNAs have opened a ketamine clinic, with not advertising that there's any kind of physician oversight. In fact, they began to say they were anesthesiologists when they first opened the clinic, which is incredibly concerning. This clinic continues to be open. Ketamine's a drug that we use in anesthesia. It is not something that you just want to have open access to. It has very limited uses, and it can be very dangerous. This one example of what we're dealing with, when we're just saying, let's just remove the physician, and it solves all our problems. With that, that's why I oppose the bill, and I hope that we can figure out a way to continue to have physician-led care, because, again, I think we've all agreed, that's the best possible care that we can provide to the citizens of Missouri. Open for questions.
Questions? Thank you for your testimony. I, of all, when you mentioned ketamine and rompan, you mentioned rompan, but ketamine, as a veterinarian, I have seen the effects of ketamine, and this isn't good, you know? As you see dogs and cats and horses going to anesthesia. In veterinary medicine, we have a term for the, cut off the arm, we call it put 'em down, you know? So everything is put 'em down, and that way we don't treat them. So it's getting late, all right? Next witness.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Purcell. I'm a board-certified
I'm a board-certified, Missouri-licensed OB/GYN specialist, and I served as a combat surgeon during Operation Desert Storm. I'm here to speak in favor of House Bill 329, and I'm here to tell you that I'm here as a surgeon. I'm not an anesthetist, I'm not an anesthesiologist. And in the rural hospital that I've served in in the last 12 years, I haven't had availability of an anesthesiologist ever once, ever once. I've worked with nurse anesthetists for over 36 years, and I'm here to tell you that as a group, they are the most steadfast, dependable, hardworking, well-educated, well-trained individuals you're going to ever find on this earth. I've had surgery myself with the anesthesia administered by nurse anesthetist, and I would highly recommend it. Please understand that when I walk into a rural Missouri operative theater, I am the surgical expert in the room. I am not the anesthesia expert. That role is filled by very capable nurse anesthesia, nurse anesthetist in my facility. And unlike some of the testimony you've had previously, my nurse anesthetist can do laryngoscopic intubations, they can do tap blocks, they can do other things that are at the cutting edge of medical science, and they have the capability to give the best doggone anesthesia that you would need in an emergency situation. There are times when we don't have time to triage a patient and get them off to the big city center. I would love, more than anything I could tell you, to have full, all the time anesthesia care in my hospital, but it's not a reality. It's a, it's a dream. Someday, maybe, but I doubt it. I doubt it, not the way things are going. So just to summarize, I'm here to speak in favor of House Bill 329. I think it's somewhat irksome that a nurse anesthetist has to have me sign off on their anesthesia chart, when in reality, I don't know what the hell I'm doing, and they do. They're the experts. I do the surgery. And between the two of us, we keep the patient alive and well, we wake them up, and we get them home. I want my colleagues in anesthesia to know, I am not antithetical to anesthesiologists in a way. Some of my best friends are anesthesiologists. But I'm here to tell you that they're just not everywhere, and no matter which kind of a map we hold up to you, in Missouri, there is a real cringing lack of anesthesia. So we can't provide this model of care that everybody is talking so altruistically about. We just can't do it in rural health care at the current time. Thank you for your attention, and I wanted to take a moment just to thank your committee. I am so impressed at how well you serve your constituents, and I thank you for your, your service.
Did we record that? We are recording. Oh, we are recording. Questions? Representative Sykes?
Yes, very briefly, I'd just like to thank you for your service to our nation. I appreciate that.
My privilege.
Representative Toshin Rice? You have not participated, so I'm going to give you a chance here.
Okay. I've been listening all night to every testimony, except when I step out of the room for a moment, but he's saying this because I haven't asked a question all night. So I'll ask my first and last question. What hospital do you work at?
Mercy Lebanon.
Lebanon.
I'm now retired, and I'm doing a consultative practice in Lebanon.
My grandchildren live near Lebanon. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Further questions? Now I'll pick on you, pick on you. Further questions?
I wanted a question from the nurse in the room.
Yeah. Yeah, Patty, but. Thank you very much for your, and your time, your effort, and your drive from Lebanon. Okay, so that, in opposition?
Good evening. Good evening. Sorry, it's kind of late. My name is Dr. Yulia Penniston. I'm an OB/GYN physician. I work in a rural hospital in Chillicothe, Missouri, and I'm here to support the House Bill 329. I had a great opportunity to work with our group of CRNAs for the past, since 2011, and the best group of CRNAs I've ever worked with. I don't think I can go and repeat, I can't remember which physician was here, the OB/GYN physician who just spoke. He basically said everything that I wanted to say. I would not be able to do what I do without CRNAs. One of the things that was not brought up to our attention this evening is, yes, there is a crisis in rural America, but I think not letting CRNAs do what they do the best will make the crisis worse. For example, I take call from home, so when a pregnant patient comes in in labor, she requires an epidural if she chooses to do so. If I have to come in for every single epidural in the middle of the night to supervise my CRNAs, I will not be able to do my job the next day. And of course, I have to attend to C-sections and do GYN surgery. So I really do think that they're very, very, very capable, they know what they're doing. I just sign a piece of paper, that's all I do. And unfortunately, I don't know what they're doing. And going back to being a team, we always communicate together. I am there for my patients every single step of the way. If the machine beeps, I kind of look over to make sure nothing is happening, and I communicate with my, with my CRNAs. If I provide any kind of local anesthetic, I will let them know that I'm injecting a local anesthetic to make sure there's no changes in blood pressure. If they tell me that the patient is not breathing well, and we need to take the patient out of the Trendelenburg for the patient to breathe well, we'll do it right away. So it's always a team effort. It's never he or she's doing her job and his job, and I'm doing my job. We're doing it together to provide the best patient's care that we possibly can. Sorry, I don't know why I'm so nervous. Any questions?
Questions? You're testifying in favor, then?
Yes, sir.
Have you filled out Witness Form?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Forgot to remind me, I need to remind everyone, make sure you fill out Witness Form. Questions? Thank you for your coming down all the way from Chillicothe, we appreciate it. Opposition? Go ahead and start.
Thank you very much. I'm Dr. Kathy Perryman. I'm here in Missouri Society of Anesthesiologists, and I just want to talk to you a bit about my experience. I started off as a nurse. I became a nurse anesthetist and practiced in a care team setting as a nurse anesthetist. And I heard the question here earlier today, why in the world would you go back to school for four years and add another four-plus years on to that to be, you know, a resident, to become an anesthesiologist? And my answer to that question was that I knew that I wanted to have that full knowledge base, I wanted to have the skill set, and that I could not achieve as a nurse anesthetist. And I really loved what I was doing, and I really understood that the staff anesthesiologists that I was working with and collaborating with was an extremely important part of the team. And there were several instances during my career in which that anesthesiologist intervened and really made a big difference in the patient's safety. And that happens with surgeons as well. So I did, I went back to school for four years, I finished my anesthesiology residency, did a fellowship in pediatric anesthesiology, and had a wonderful practice collaborating again with CRNAs for over three decades. So I value them as members of the team. Most of the CRNAs that I've known over my career would not want to practice independently, but when they are, you know, if they're in a rural setting, the surgeon is a very important part of that team. We collaborate with surgeons all the time in tertiary care centers, and the description that the last OB/GYN gave is very, very much, I think, what we're talking about retaining is that teamwork that is so important in patient care and patient safety.
Thank you. You obviously bring in a different approach from anybody we've had so far. Questions? Again, Dr. Perryman, thank you for spending a long, long day, and we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Let's see, this is opposition in favor. Yeah, and how many, again, I'm taking a hint and count, how many left in favor? I think they are multiplying outside. I think, I think there's something, there's something going on outside that we don't know about here, you know? So, all right, that was the favor. How many opposed? One, okay. Commence.
Hello. My name is Carla Klubine, and I am the Chief Executive Officer of Pershing Memorial Hospital, a critical access hospital located in Lynn County, Missouri. Our hospital, as small as it is, still has some outpatient services that perform procedures at our facility, and those include orthopedics, gastroenterology, urology, ophthalmology, and podiatry. At Pershing Hospital, our anesthesia services have been provided solely by CNRAs for more than 30 years. In the 31 years that I have been a part of our organization, the care provided by our CRNAs have been nothing short of exceptional. In the 15 months that I have served as the CEO, I have not received one complaint or concern from patients, staff, or physicians regarding the quality of care or professionalism our CRNAs provide. Access to health care impacts the quality of life of citizens in rural communities such as mine. Without our hospital, patients would be required to travel up to 90 miles to receive some of the same outpatient procedures that they receive at my facility. We serve a large elderly population. Transportation for this population can be very difficult and impossible at times. Due to challenges of travel, many of our elderly patients will decline referrals or procedures that require them to travel more than just a few miles. During my time as CEO, I have been actively trying to recruit both primary care and specialty physicians to my facility. To say this is challenging is an understatement. The rural community is not attractive to the physician candidates for various reasons. Some of those include supervisory responsibilities. If not for CNRAs providing services, or providing anesthesia coverage at my facility, we would not be able to provide the limited number of services that I listed to you earlier. And the loss of that revenue alone would be enough to impact my facility's ability to stay open. When rural hospitals close, more patients are left without access to health care. Thank you.
Okay. Questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Appreciate that it's a long drive from Lynn County, Missouri, this time of night, and I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, and oppos, let's see, that was, I need opposition. Proceed when ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Jackson, registered lobbyist for the Missouri Society of Anesthesiologists. I don't know how it's over 10 o'clock, and we haven't had a joke about people falling asleep yet, given the contents of the bill, but I'll provide that dad joke. In all seriousness, I want to thank the committee. I know this has been a long day, a long hearing, but we have people on both sides of here who, you know, come and travel a long way, and this is, this is their profession. They went to school a long time to do this, regardless of what side you're on, and a lot of hearings like this, people start filtering off and leaving. So we, we thank you for, regardless of where you stand on the bill. I think it's important to think about, and go back to patients. We haven't, you know, had anybody testify as a patient today, you know, talking about what they want in their anesthesia care, when they go into surgery, and who they want involved in their anesthesia. I think Dr. Swerengen mentioned before, and I think it's important to reiterate, that the map that everyone talks about in these 46 states, in my opinion, is very misleading in that that is relative to the word supervision. And so states that require medical direction, or collaboration, or involvement, or if the statutes are in the Board of Healing Arts chapter and not the Board of Nursing chapter, is not counted in that colored map. So I think that's important to clarify as we're thinking about what's going on in other states. Secondly, I think it's important to look at the current law and what's currently being provided. Right now, CRNAs are already permitted to provide anesthesia care without an anesthesiologist in rural hospitals. I think, as Representative Keithley mentioned, this does nothing to change the amount of surgeries. If this bill passes, you can't do any more surgeries, you still have to have the surgeon. What this bill says is that the physician in the room is no longer the quarterback. And opposed to, you know, the other bill we talked about before, when you have somebody that takes a prescription, you know, maybe, and comes back in a week, or is in a collaborative practice arrangement with the doctor 75 miles away, you have a little more time. When you're under anesthesia, seconds matter. And so what this says is that a physician, and even a surgeon, they can delegate something to the CRNA as much or as little as they feel comfortable. But that physician has that critical care training in managing an emergency. And it's, and we feel that patients want and deserve to have that physician involved in that care. In regards to the protocols, I'm happy to discuss more of that offline with you. As I said, I'm here every day. All a facility has to do is have a protocol in place that says, here is a range of medications that's provided for each surgery, and if you go beyond those protocols, beyond that range, in a certain scenario, you have to get a verbal order from the doctor during surgery, and they sign off on it afterwards. I'm a little shocked how many people have said that, you know, this is already happening and seem to be admitting not following the current law, which is a little alarming. But when we talk about rural areas right now, and where you don't have anesthesiologists, it's a very small percentage of the total surgeries provided. I think, as one of the physicians mentioned earlier, a lot of things are getting rerouted to urban areas for a reason. But I know I'm over my time of it. Thank you.
Questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Let's see, that was opposition in favor.
My name is Joe Dietrich. I'm a CRNA in Chillicothe. Dr. Penniston and Ms. Klubine are in hospitals that I work at, and we're very fortunate to have them there. I've been a CRNA for 28 years, 16 years at Truman Medical Center in Kansas City, as a CRNA instructor in an anesthesia care team setting, and the last 12 years in private practice in a rural setting. Our group provides sole CRNA coverage to six hospitals in North Missouri. We cover over 5% of Missouri counties. I'm going to get to, I think I can answer your question about collaborative practice. I believe I can answer your question about pain management. I'm going to talk to you about other situations. My concern with the need to pass this bill is that there is such a convoluted pathway to both the supervision issue and the prescriptive authority issue, that we can't comply with them all the time, or we're at risk for adverse interpretation by a regulator, and therefore can be cited or lose the possibility of obtaining some services. I would certainly challenge that I can provide safe anesthesia and done so. I can tell you, in our hospitals, our employees actually seek out the CRNAs to provide their anesthesia. I do know Dr. Perryman, about 30 years ago in my training, I rotated with her in my pediatric rotation, and appreciated that very much. So to your question about supervision outside the operating room, there are situations where that's necessary. When we do labor pain analgesia, that's usually in the labor and delivery suite, there's physicians not necessarily immediately there, the obstetrician. Sometimes we do radiological sedation, and an MRI most specifically, and we may get called for critical services such as airway management or code blues in the OR, I'm sorry, in the ER, or in the ICU. We don't have an operating practitioner in those. Now, a little history is, the operating practitioner and supervision definition actually comes from CMS and Medicare, and then got codified in the statutes. So we're having to work backwards to undo this. We've got to get it out of the statutes before we can get it cleared by Medicare. Medicare defines what anesthesia is only in the hospital regulations. So we, we have to do this weaving thing to try to pretend that we're following all the regulations. Also, there are times in an emergency specific to the prescriptive authority when we can't have those signed in advance that BNDD has said is necessary. If we have an emergency C-section, they can't put those orders in. Or if in the middle of the night I'm doing a labor epidural, the obstetrician may have called in the order to admit the patient, which includes an order for the epidural to be placed on the patient request. If I need to give ephedrine, which is a controlled medication to support the blood pressure, I don't have an order in for that, and the patient, the nurse would have to wake up the physician to get that. Mind you, the controlled substance is very narrowly focused to the perioperative environment, to the drugs that we give every day, or in recovery room, where I know what that patient received, how they responded, and what the best choices are. Not trying to expand practice in those cases. So for us, it's streamlining the convoluted processes to reduce the risk of adverse interpretations. And one of the And one of the other things in the CMS regulations that relieving supervision would cause refers to podiatrists and dentists. The CMS regulations unfortunately are contradictory in their description of who can supervise. We actually had a state surveyor in Bethany last October, and thank goodness I was there because I know the regulations, who questioned whether we could do a seda, an anesthetic for a podiatry case because they weren't an MD or a DO. And I showed her where that is in the CMS regulations, but they're a little contradictory. So we need to clean these up, so we can just continue essentially the practices that we're doing, but without risk of losing our licenses, being cited, or the hospitals losing their ability to do podiatry, or dental cases, which all six of the hospitals we cover do one or the other. Thank you.
I have a question. So you're saying we need CMS revisions, that what we're doing is not going to affect? I got a little lost on that.
I know, it's, it's convoluted.
Because we can't, we don't have any control over CMS, I wish we did.
No, you don't. Except, so supervision is something that was going to be relieved entirely by CMS back in the year 2001, because of a 1998 article that showed we were just as safe. However, because of the push-pull, throw something against the wall, everything against the wall, something will stick, they came out, and the states can opt out of the supervision regulation. But we have to get at a statute before the governor can opt out of the supervision. And the description of supervision in the CMS guidelines is variable. If we're free of the supervision, then we don't have the issue providing any question about being able to provide anesthesia for dental or surgical cases. That also gets into the definition of what is anesthesia, is a sedation case where I give a little bit of medication, actually an anesthetic, is labor pain relief and anesthetic. Those are defined differently in different places, and those things become crystal clear and okay if we can get relief from the supervision guidelines. And then regarding the prescriptive authority, again, there are just times where we can't comply in spite of best efforts for putting in an order set that I personally wrote for our institutions, for the physician to sign for me to give. And to your question, if I may address the previously addressed questions, if that's okay, you asked about pain management. Back in 2014, a bill was passed that prevented CNRAs from using advanced imaging modalities such as CT scanning or real-time x-ray. So being able to place the spinal cord stimulator is not feasible. These orders only allow us to administer medications in the perioperative environment, so we can't send them home on a script for pain medicine. Ketamine clinic, okay, I don't know, maybe, but low-dose ketamine has actually been proven to be very helpful in a number of situations. But the type of pain management you're referring to, Representative Thomas, I don't see as feasible, just because you can't use the imaging necessary, which was the entire intent of the bill in 2014. You had a question about the collaborative practice. That's where things got muddied years back, when they wanted to give APRNs prescriptive authority, and in a collaborative practice agreement, CNRAs were specifically carved out of being able to give those. I think the concern by the opposition was, okay, a CRNA could get collaborative practice agreement, use the prescriptive authority to do what we're asking to do going forward. Collaborative practice and supervision are not the same thing. Supervision is a definition that comes down from Medicare, just means we have to work in the presence during an anesthetic of the MDDO podiatrist or dentist. Again, you get into the definition exactly what's anesthesia. So there's, nobody I know uses collaborative practice in a nursing anesthesia environment. For us, it'd be impossible. We cover six hospitals, we have five full-time CNRAs, several part-time CNRAs, the math just wouldn't work in those situations anyway. And all we need to do is have the presence of the practitioner in the operating room, that part's not going to change. What's going to change is the regulatory risk from interpretation of these, our ability to navigate these little zigzags of the convoluted regulations, and making sure we're doing everything we can to be compliant.
Representative Bennett?
So, am I understanding that you're saying there's always a physician, podiatrist or dentist throughout your administering of the anesthesia process?
In a true, in an anesthetic in the operating room, that's correct. Because they're the people that are only allowed by CMS to do surgery.
Okay, so there's never a point in time where you're with the patient, and they aren't present, either before they start the surgery, or during a portion?
Immediately available is a common phrase, but we don't start a procedure until the surgeon's in the operating suite, so to speak. And they may be back out dictating, but they're going to come follow up on the patient. Again, we have a very cooperative environment with all our surgeons, we're very fortunate in that regard.
So a protocol change would not be sufficient enough to address the issue that you talked about where a physician was at home, you needed to start, say, an epidural, I don't, I'm not an anesthesiologist, so forgive me, but...
They cannot call in a controlled medication order set.
Okay.
And if the patient comes in the middle of the night, and they haven't got on the computer, because they would only do this on somebody they've already seen in clinics. If there's a, what might call a walk-in, somebody from another county they've never seen, they would come in and see that patient directly. But they can't, they would have to get on a computer to do an online order for those situations. And it's not one, I give ephedrine for a labor epidural, and low blood pressure, it's a blood pressure medication, probably once every 20 or 30 or 40 epidurals, it's not common. And again, it gets back to the stuff, this is what I do every day, multiple times. And I'm the only one in advanced practice without prescriptive authority to any degree.
Sure, okay, thanks.
Further questions? If not, thank you very much for your testimony, appreciate it. Let's see, opposition? Okay, if we're through with opposition, opposition or in favor?
Opposition.
Okay.
My name is Ryan DeBoof, I'm a Registered Lobbyist for the Missouri Association of Osteopathic Physicians and Surgeons. I certainly cannot add any more to the expertise you guys have heard tonight, but wanted to go on the record in opposition to the bill. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? If not, thank you, appreciate it. In support, apparently all the opposition is down, in support. How many more we got in support? Those rabbits are still going out there. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Burns, I'm here in support of House Bill 329. Just to introduce myself, I've been a CRNA in the state of Missouri for 22 years. I am currently a professor of nurse anesthesia in St. Louis, Missouri. Prior to that, I did work in rural Missouri for 20-plus years, performing the various anesthetic tasks. I'm definitely a proud member of the nursing profession. We certainly are not anti-anesthesiologists, I respect their profession and respect all their contributions as well, and have enjoyed working with them throughout the years. Just to explain the nurse anesthesia education, it's a four-year undergraduate degree is required prior to applying to nurse anesthesia. They must have, on average, one to four years of critical care experience as well. That varies, most, I think they gave you the average of four and a half years, seems to be the average experience. One of the concerns that I wanted to make sure I addressed, that, let's say this bill passes tomorrow, we can't take a lot of more applicants into the nurse anesthesia programs. And that's regulated by the Council of Accreditation of our national body up in Chicago. And so the number of CNRAs that are, you know, of the 26,000 RNs in the state of Missouri, we're only allowed to take less than 80 CNRAs in the four programs in the state of Missouri. And so in order to increase that number, it would take quite the rigorous process for us to be able to increase that even just the slightest amount per program. So we do appreciate that we do have a nursing shortage, and certainly by increasing the access to healthcare or decreasing the supervision, this would not take from the floor nurses and so forth within the state of Missouri. As far as, once they accept into the nurse anesthesia program, they have three years, 36 months of doctorate-prepared education. Upon completion of that, they've completed greater than 2,000 hours in the cockpit, if you will, in performing anesthesia. If you compare that to our commercial airline pilots of 1,500 hours versus cargo of 2,000 hours, certainly that has some appeal. If you add our ICU experience, we're going to 8,000 or more hours total in the clinical area. We have a recertification process and reboarding. As far as the malpractice, I think we all presented studies that, you know, one group's really good, the other group's pretty good. I think really the proof's a pudding, that the malpractice insurance rates have actually gone down. And I think both sides have alluded to, anesthesia has become pretty safe, as far as the medications, the monitoring devices, the advancement. So you have to have enormous studies to show a little difference, if any. But I've enjoyed, I've been in this for 22 years, but in three decades, the anesthesia premiums have actually gone down 36%. And if you do a cost for inflation, it's around 74% reduction. I, I wish all my other insurances would go down, as far as my auto and my home and so forth. So, so I think both the anesthesiology world and the nurse anesthesia world, we've enjoyed a reduction in our malpractice premiums. We certainly have a high-risk business, but I think both professions are truly dedicated to patient safety, and that has been shown, that we don't have a lot of claims, and therefore we have decreased liability insurance. So, you know, when you look at states that are opt-out, there's certainly a few of those, they happen to surround Missouri, I think a lot of our folks are wanting to go to those particular states and practice when they graduate to nurse anesthesia programs. But nonetheless, those malpractice insurance rates aren't elevated either. And we checked with our national organization, and they do not change their premiums, the MedPro underwrites them, they also underwrite the anesthesiology malpractice insurance rates as well. And so both groups have, again, our dedication to patient safety has reigned king. We actually have decreased claims in both groups, and certainly our insurance rates are, been shown to be reduced. Thank you for your time, any questions?
Questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for your testimony, that was very helpful on the malpractice, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, in support?
Hi, my name is Morgan Roberts, I'm an OR nurse, I've been working as an OR nurse in Columbia for the last five years. So I work in a large hospital with CNRAs and anesthesiologists, so I work in the operating room every single day. And I just wanted to note, you know, I think we've covered a lot of the same thing over and over again, so I'll try to make it short, but I just want to note that the supervision that is, that the anesthesiologists are giving to the CNRAs is not probably what you're thinking of as supervision. The anesthesiologists typically will come in the room as the patient's going off to sleep, and then they'll leave the room, and the CRNA will stay in the room with the patient for the rest of the procedure. So no one is guiding the CRNA throughout the entire case, they're doing that. They're very, you know, capable of making those decisions of what medications they need to give, how to adjust their anesthesia throughout the case. And then at the end of the case, anesthesiologist will come in, sign off on the chart, and that's pretty much the extent of what the supervision is on a day-to-day basis. So that being said, if I'm having surgery, or if a family member's having surgery, I will specifically request a CRNA for that care, just based on what I see in my everyday practice. That's all.
Questions? Thank you very much, and thank you for sticking with us as long as you have. Further opposition?
Support.
Support, I'm sorry, support. Make sure everybody fills out their, their sheets, yeah, still, still, that, we all saw that, where they all got out of Volkswagen, they kept coming, you know. Go ahead.
Thanks, hi, everybody, my name is Jack Siegel, I'm the Outreach Manager for the Missouri Nurses Association, and I want to go on record in support of the bill on behalf of our nurse members throughout the state. I don't want to repeat much of the testimony that you've heard already, I'm sure it's been a very long hearing for everyone. What I will say is that supporting this bill would help CNRAs continue providing healthcare in Missouri to people who need it, especially in rural settings. It would remove restrictions and concerns over liability and put Missouri more in line with states that border it. I think all of those are good reasons, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Come on up.
I'm coming.
Make sure you fill out your forms, please.
I have. Mr. Chairman, I, I love the way that you say Missouri, that's the correct way to say it.
That's the only way to say it, that's the only way.
And I think I may be close to the last one, so we'll get out of here before midnight. Anyways, my name is Zach Smith, I grew up in the rural town of Clever, Missouri. My dad was a lineman for Ozark Electric, and my mom taught fourth grade in Missouri State History, so I kind of know what's going on here. I'm very happily married and have three beautiful daughters. After graduating from Mercy College in Springfield, Missouri with my nursing degree, I worked exclusively in the intensive care unit for seven years. I've had the opportunity to serve in several of our Missouri hospitals, from Level 1 trauma centers all the way down to small community hospitals. I was admitted to Missouri State University's CRNA program, where I am currently a student nurse anesthetist, and I will graduate in 2025, hopefully. As a former ICU nurse, I was trained to be extremely vigilant in the care of my patients, and this carries over to my current education. When literal seconds matter, CRNA students are being trained on what to do, when to do it, and how to keep our patients safe and alive. Upon graduation, I will have approximately 2,400 hours of training on top of my 13,000 clinical hours as an ICU nurse. After speaking with my fellow students, many of them are here today, if they would raise their hands, we are all struggling with the same dilemma. We all struggle with deciding where to work and where to raise our families after graduation. We have 43 other states to choose from that do not require burdensome supervision for the surgeon or restrictions on our future licenses. I wanted this testimony to be accurate and reflect some of the feelings of my fellow students. This was the response from a survey of CRNA, CRNA students in Missouri. 81% of the students in Missouri are Missouri residents. 73% of those students from Missouri have possible intentions to leave the state after graduation. 61 intend to leave so that they can have an unrestricted license and the ability to practice at the height of their education and training. I live with an easy driving distance of Arkansas, Oklahoma, and Kansas, three of the 43 states that have updated laws that reflect how anesthesia care is actually provided in the operating room. I do not want to serve the people of those states. I do not want to practice my skill outside of the state of Missouri. I love the idea of serving my family, friends, neighbors, and those in need of healthcare in rural Missouri. I have deep ties with my family and friends, and I'm actively involved in my community. I want nothing more than to work in the state of Missouri. But unless this law is changed, I have decided to move to a state that will embrace my training and expertise. Politicians always talk about wanting to make Missouri a great place to live, work, and raise your family. You now have the opportunity to do that for my family with this bill. I ask that you please support House Bill 329, so that myself and many of my fellow students that are here have the ability to stay in Missouri and serve in the communities both big and small that we all love. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Keithley.
To inquire.
Yeah.
I counted, I counted about six Missouris. You know, I said I loved, I said I love the way that he's, I love the fact that that's on the record. That's fantastic. It's Nix, it's Nixie, it's not Nyxah. Oh, my goodness.
Let's see. You started him, I haven't, somebody woke up.
Listen, I've been saying this thing for like 24 hours.
It's the magic number, four, four. To inquire, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. So my question is, as a CRNA, what guidelines or what is set or training do they follow? Do they mimic the diagnosis or the, or administer the medicines based off of the anesthesia, anesthesia pathways that have been previously set? Or how do they know how much to administer and when to administer? So do they follow their pathways, my question?
So that varies depending on the patient you have to deal with. Patient age is a big factor, patient sex is a big factor, there are comorbidities, so what I may use on patient A, I may not use on patient B.
Yeah, so I guess what my question is, previously, like, if they have data that says a woman in labor gets this amount, but where's that data coming from? Has it previously been proven by anesthesiologists that this is what, this is the tone that is set?
I am not the one to ask that question. Student, student, CRNA, so...
Well, after, what, five and a half hours, I think I'm certified to become a CRNA now.
You can ask any question, I just may not answer.
Yes, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Representative Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to inquire.
Go ahead.
Well, I just want to thank you for coming, and your dedication, and your education, and coming here and sitting here for so many hours. I think your testimony was spot-on. I think you wrapped this up really, really nicely. We, I guess, speaking for myself, I certainly want to keep all of you all here in Missouri. You know, we, you've identified the workforce crisis we've had, we've talked about the healthcare crisis, you can go to any neighboring state... You can go to any neighboring state, so certainly we can, my goal is to get this across the finish line and keep you all here in Missouri or Missouri.
I would love to stay. I would absolutely love to stay, but they've got pretty good duck hunting in South Dakota, so.
Representative Gregg?
Well, I'm a little bit biased here, but you were very eloquent in your presentation. Again, I personally would like to keep you here where you're at. Your mama and daddy raised you well, I can tell. He is one of my constituents, so.
Adding for votes. Wanted to beat that three-minute.
There we go. We sat down just the other day, real quick here. Tell me real quick, and I apologize here because it's late, you gave me a rundown of how you spend time with your patients. Can you really quick, give us that real quick?
In regards to, as an ICU nurse or as?
Surgery, I think is what we were talking about.
Surgery. As we do pre-op and then as soon as I walk in there and I'm like, hey, I'm Zach, I'm going to be your student nurse today, I've got one week of training, you know, along those lines, I am with them until I send them off to PACU. So whether that be a 30-minute procedure, whether that be several hours, that patient's life is my sole responsibility. Once I push certain medications, I have bought that airway, I am breathing for that patient, I'm making sure that they stay alive. And I do that in a safe manner. I don't just arbitrarily look at a patient and say, I could probably give them this amount of drug. No, I'm thinking critically. Like I said, 13,000 hours where I managed drips that could potentially kill people, your heart would explode, your heart would stop, you just never wake up. So I would like to think that, although I'm not a medical doctor, I would like to think that that measly 13,000 hours accounts for something, so.
Thank you very much.
Further questions? If not, thank you and we appreciate your time and effort and all of your nursing colleagues.
I'd like to thank both CRNAs and anesthesiologists for their safe, quality, patient-centered care that we provide for all constituents in the state of Missouri. I also want to thank CRNAs and anesthesiologists for, you know, their focus on, on research, continued education and clinical excellence within the state of Missouri. There are a couple of points I'd like to clarify with the committee before we conclude our evening. The first is the, the map or the handout presented by the Missouri Society of Anesthesiologists, it's the red and green map, I believe, and they discuss that 48 of the 50 states have language regarding supervision, medical direction or physician involvement. And I just want to clarify and assure the committee that with the legislation as it's written, that will not change with this map. This bill has provisions regarding physician involvement of the podiatrist, surgeon or dentist. And again, we don't operate within a silo when we take care of patients. We all work together for a team to, again, provide that high-quality patient-centered care. And with that, are there any questions?
Anybody else have questions? If not, thank you very much for your testimony.
We thank you all for your time.
Is there anybody in opposition left? Is there anybody for information only left? Is there anybody still out there? No. Thank you very much. We appreciate your attention. Question? You bet. You can come up here. You have to fill out a form. For information only. If not, the 329, the hearing in 329 is closed. Thank you very much.